Can I talk to you about this this morning?
Yeah.
Changing that petition.
Yeah, yeah, we need, yeah, what do we need to do is state that, I guess.
I guess, which Mr. Walker was asked you to put out.
We, we never have nothing written down on mayor pro temp duties or...
I couldn't find anything.
Can I make a motion that we put duties and term on it?
You could do that, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Will you come back with that or?
I can do that, yeah.
Okay.
Between Jeff and I, we could do that, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I was gonna give it to him.
But I'm happy to do it. Yeah, no, we're gonna add that, let's get it added. Which one of them were moving?
Let's say move item I to regular agenda. That's the leasing of vehicles.
To regular agenda?
Yeah.
Okay, move it out of...
Move it out of consent.
Okay, and?
And that's the...
Yeah, yeah, that's good.
And then if you want to do the repair prayer for the time...
I have already got that right.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I called a order of the regular scheduled meeting of the Rocky Mount City Council on December 12th approximately seven o'clock. This time, I would like to ask everybody to please stand and observe a moment of prayer. And during this time, if you would consider and honor a moment of silence for Natanya Richardson and her family who recently passed away.
Thank you.
This time, I'd like to ask the court, please call the roll.
Here.
Blackwell.
Here.
Joyner.
Here.
TJ Walker.
Here.
Dautrich.
Here.
Harris.
Here.
Jabaris Walker.
Okay. We have a call. This time, I'd like to consider the minutes of the regular sched... well, before we go to there, I would like to make any... no, we'll do that later. Consideration of the minutes of the regular scheduled mini city council that was held on September 26th, 2022. Looking for a motion to approve the minutes? Motion made by Councilman Joyner, is there a second? Second by Councilman TJ Walker. Is there a need for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. At this time, I'd like to see if there are any additions or deletions to the agenda. I've been requested that we remove item I from the consent agenda to the regular agenda. We'll do that after the consent agenda. Are there any other additions or deletions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Councilman Dautrich?
I would like to add to our agenda, the vote for the city council to appointing our next, hopefully our next city manager, Keith C. Rogers Jr.
Okay, add the confirmation vote for Keith Rogers. Any other additions and/or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, again, to remove item I from the consent agenda, move it to the regular agenda, and then to vote to confirm Keith Rogers as next city manager. Is there a motion? Motion made by Councilman Joyner, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Tom Harris. Any need for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. The agenda has been adjusted accordingly. At this time, I'll ask our interim city manager, Peter F. Varney, to please give us a community update.
Just, just three things. One is that the city had entered into an agreement with NCDOT and the rail... CSX Railroad some years ago had to do with closing some rail crossings. There's one crossing that is soon to be closed. I think the work begins on it on December the 19th, and that is the crossing at Pitt Street. There's signs out there on both approaches to that crossing, but that crossing is scheduled to be closed. I don't know that everybody knows about that. We had a major water line break on Sunset Avenue right near Patterson Drive, right near Combs Century 21 Real Estate Agency. There's a major water line break. That water line was under high pressure. It's all been restored now. The street has been repaired, the cut has been repaired. But if you want to see what the force of that water did, look at the curb ramp at the entrance to Combs Century 21 driveway. That concrete section had been raised about six inches, and so all of that will have to be replaced sometime in the next couple of weeks. And the only other thing is that, just a reminder, that there'll be no city council meeting on December 26th. So this should be our last city council meeting in the year 2022.
Great, thank you, Mr. Varney. Are there any questions or observations or comments for Mr. Varney? Okay, seeing none. At this time, I would like to make a presentation. On the occasion of her 100th birthday, I'd like to ask Ms. Ruth Anderson Smith, please come forward. On the occasion of your 100th birthday, I have sincere best wishes that we congratulate you on the 29th day of November 2022, which I believe was your actual birthday. I wanted to say thank you so much for coming here and allowing us the opportunity to honor you on such a momentous occasion. Thank you.
Beth, it's, uh, so many students here in Nash Rocky Mount librarian, and she taught at Parker School for numerous of years. And she also been a very strong supporter, an officer in the NAACP. And she's a member of one of the greatest sororities. They are representing, they're pink and green. But we love her, and she has made a tremendous contribution in this city and all over this country. And we just appreciate her birthday today. Thank you, thank you all for coming.
Thank you, Councilman Knight. At this time, I'd like to ask the board to consider the following resolution. Whereas Claire Knight served the citizens of Rocky Mount as a member of the Rocky Mount Board of Adjustment from January 2006 until November of 2011, and whereas Claire Knight continued to serve as a citizen of Rocky Mount as a member of the Rocky Mount Planning Board from November 2011 until July of '22, and whereas the Rocky Mount City Council appointed Claire Knight three times as a member of the Rocky Mount Board of Adjustment and five times as a member of the Rocky Mount Planning Board, thereby showing the confidence they placed in her to help decide appeals related to the enforcement of the city's land development code and to conduct a comprehensive and continuing program to direct the community's growth and establish principles and policies regarding development in the city of Rocky Mount. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council on the city of the city of Rocky Mount on behalf of the citizens of Rocky Mount hereby express their appreciation of Claire Knight for her 17 years of dedicated service as a member of the city of Rocky Mount boards, commissions, and committees. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution? Motion made by Councilman Knight, seconded by Councilman Joyner. Is there a need for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Okay, resolution passes. I'd like to ask Mr. Ernest Taylor if he'll come forward and accept this on behalf of Ms. Knight.
He's one of the, one of the best dressed men in Rocky Mount. Taylor shoe world, and it's strikeout Taylor.
And I think Ms. Knight was unable to be here tonight because of her health, so please keep her in your prayers.
At this time, I'd like to ask the Rocky Mount City Council to consider the following resolution. Whereas John Mevin has served the citizens of Rocky Mount as a member of the Rocky Mount Historic Preservation Commission since the inception of the board in 1997, and whereas John Mevin served many roles during his time on the commission, including vice chairperson, chairperson, and chairing the Rules of Procedure Subcommittee, and whereas the Rocky Mount City Council appointed John Mevin six times to four-year terms as a member of the Rocky Mount Historic Preservation Commission, thereby showing the confidence they placed in him to help safeguard the heritage of the city of Rocky Mount by preserving and regulating historic landmarks and district. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the city of Rocky Mount on behalf of the citizens of Rocky Mount hereby express their appreciation of John Mevin for his 25 years of dedicated service as a member of the Rocky Mount Historic Preservation Commission. Do I have a motion?
Same move.
Motion made by Councilman Dautrich, seconded by Councilman Joyner. Is there a need for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Resolution has passed. Mr. Mevin, if you'd please come forward. I'd get my 10,000 steps in today. Okay, let's see. That brings us to item number eight, which petitions to be received from the public. The public petition's portion of the city council meeting is an opportunity for public comment, and the city council appreciates your attendance and thanks you for expressing your views and opinions. City council values all citizen input. This is an opportunity to raise a question or present a request to the council. However, in most cases, council members will not respond to public comments, but may refer a matter to the city manager or staff for follow-up. Time will be monitored in order to give everyone an opportunity to speak, and speakers will have three minutes. Please be aware that the sign-in sheets must be presented to the security officer prior to the opening of the city council meeting. And if an organized group is present to speak on a common issue, please designate one person to present the group's comments. If your comments are in regard to an item to the subject of a public hearing, please wait until that item is introduced to speak. Time will also be monitored. If your comments in regard to an evidentiary hearing, additional time may be granted. City council requests you please adhere to the following guidelines. Complete a sign-in sheet. Dress comments to the council as a whole and not to individual council members or city staff. Speak from the podium in a civil, non-argumentative, and respectful manner. Personal attacks which have the potential to disrupt the meeting will not be tolerated, and you will be asked to sit down or move from the meeting, and please keep comments to three minutes. This time, I would like to ask the GKW Foundation for Kids to please come forward.
Hello, my name is Gertrude. Call me TJ in the community. I'm the owner of GKW Foundation for Kids and Teens, and I'm proud of them when I came out. We are trying to get a GKW home for kids. Yes, I know y'all have some location for kids, but I visit them, and a lot of isn't genuinely... We do kid events. We've been doing it for five years. Parents work, so kids can't get to the event, so we bring the event to the kids. In different neighborhoods, a lot of low-income, like the projects and places like that where I grew up, of course. We have an event this Sunday at South Rocky Mountain Gym. It's an all-pro dad basketball game, but we're gonna have Santa there, free pitches for the kids, a candy drop, and gift giveaways. We do this every year. Our goal is to get a GKW home with a library in it, a room for the kids to sleep. And also, how we're gonna fund it, we're trying to build a kid restaurant. Because really, we only have Golden Corral for the kids. A kid restaurant would be like a family-oriented restaurant for the kids, and that's how we're planning to fund the GKW home. And that's what I would like to present to you all.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I'd like to invite Ms. Nathlin O'Ree to the podium.
Good evening, mayor, city manager, and city council members and those present. My name is Nathlin O'Ree, and I stand before you as a citizen of Rocky Mount who is concerned about support for United Christian Ministries. I've heard rumors of it having a possibility of closing, and I see it's on the agenda tonight for a $30,000 contribution from the city. But I'm also concerned about the information being circulated about us getting a new judicial center for the amount of $20 million. And as a citizen, I need more transparency regarding the funding and the building and different things regarding the judicial center. And I'm also requesting more support for United Christian Ministries. If people have nowhere to go in times of need, that will cause more crime. And of course, you'll need a judicial center to send them to prison. I went to early vote during the regular season of voting, and a young lady was at social services sitting on the floor because she had been locked out of her home by our friend Faruk. She was holding a baby and had two more children, and two more children were away in school. Where was she supposed to go stay? We need resources for times like this. We're just coming out of COVID, and a lot of people have not recovered. So please, keep in mind our needed, the needs of our citizens. And the Bible says, "The poor ye shall have with you always." And if we help the poor, they don't have to remain poor. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Mr. Malcolm Logan to the podium. Since here you came to vote, talk about the public hearing, so if you'll just wait. I'd like to ask Mr. Al Bullard to the podium.
Merry Christmas, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Al Bullard. I live at 3503 Chelsea Drive here in Rocky Mount. I want to tell you how nice I was riding up here, how nice the city lake looked. It's absolutely beautiful. And y'all have done a tremendous job. I'm coming here because one job I don't think was done right. The language was terrible, and it was the parade. There was a car in that parade that had some of the most terrible foul language coming out of the car. And I understand line 22, it says you play all Christmas music, and this wasn't Christmas music. And I have it recorded. If you would like to hear it, I'll be glad to make y'all a copy. I'm sure you have probably seen it. And so, I think we need to, back in the day, Al Sweatt did a tremendous job with his parade. He had, he had the, uh, Merchants Association did the parade, and they got folks, and they had it on Saturday to bring folks downtown to shop. And as a kid, I worked at Epstein's, and that was the big thing on Saturday right after Thanksgiving. So I, I've come to you that we needed to... I was ashamed. I'm ashamed of the parade we had. And I've been to several parades around just because I'm retired, don't have anything to do. Went to Cary, went to Wilson, I mean, different places, and they absolutely do a tremendous job. I appreciate the job y'all do. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you, Mr. Bullard. I'd like to ask Reverend Nehemiah Smith to the podium.
Good evening, council, mayor. I would again like to thank the city of Rocky Mount for your support of Feed the City, the third annual Feed the City. It was a great success. At current count, we have about, we believe about 30, 300 people that were served this weekend. I want everybody to know that Councilman Dautrich, and Harris, and Mayor, after y'all left, that's when we got the wave. Y'all worked during time when nobody came, but as soon as you left, all of a sudden, the wave came. I want to thank also all of the councilmen. I want to thank Councilman Jabaris Walker and Councilman, uh, Councilman Joyner for their support as well, and all of your support. This year, our community partners, Sara Lee, Walmart, Dunkin' Donuts, of course, the city of Rocky Mount TriFaith Ministries Food Line, Piglet Wiggly Bread Box, Chick-fil-A, and Hing Ta. Also, we want to make sure that we thank and let you know that you have two great chiefs in this city. The chief of police and the fire chief. Because their men were out there, and they served people, and they got the opportunity for the community to see that, that, you know, people are working with them. And Chief Hassel even came out and passed out some stuff, so I was glad to see Chief out there passing out toys to the kids and people getting a chance to really know who our city leaders are. Too often, the reason why things go bad is because people quit. I don't know about anybody else, but like my namesake in the Bible, I refuse to come down off of this wall of helping people. Because the minute I come down, that's when everything will fall apart, and I'm glad that you are on the wall with me. My good friend from Argentina was trying to teach me Spanish, and he taught me this thing. He said, "Debemos amarnos unos a otros porque Dios es amor." It says, "We ought to love one another because God is love." And this weekend, I'm so glad that, that we were able to show our community that God is love and that love is an action. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Reverend Smith. I'd like to invite Stephanie Houghton to the podium.
My name is Stephanie Houghton, and I write the blog Main Street Rocky Mount. And I wanted to come tonight to be with all of you on this last go-round of the, of the year. It's been a fabulous year. I know we always have things that happen, but you can't ask for any more positive things than what's happening right now on Main Street. The new opening of the office is, Milan has done, it will say more for what can be done for the, with the architecture downtown than words can say about the possibilities. And I wanted to, you know, to, to share with everybody that we, we have lots to be blessed about. And the other thing I wanted to come is, it turns out, after Lage added something, our time is running out with Mr. Varney, and I wanted to come and be sure to say, and I know I speak for all of you, that his name will forever be linked now with, with Rocky Mount. I think this is the fourth time that he's trying to retire, and I have a feeling he's gonna make it this time. I, I wanted to tell you a story. He, he took me to the train station for the first time when I first saw it. And everybody was, he spoke to everybody, and everybody spoke to him, and he called it, the people called him Mr. Peter, Mr. Peter. And there was a black lady there in the train station, and I said to her, "Tell me about Mr. Varney. Is he a good person?" And this woman with some sparkle in her eyes said, "Oh, he's the best." And I think all of us would agree to that, that we probably won't even know all of the things that he has taken his hand to. But I know all of you on the city council have turned to him. I've never been here when there's been a question asked that he didn't know the answer and then some. And I don't know how we'll do without him, but we will somehow. And all of you will step up and help whoever this new person is. I hope that he is a man who, who has a moral compass like Mr. Varney, who has no guile, and who is always on top of what might be best for the citizens and what might be best for the community. And as I say, I don't know how we'll exactly do without him, but he'll be here, and he'll, he's always available. You know that. He'll come and speak. He'll take you on a tour. He'll do whatever. So, um...
Thank you, Miss Houghton.
We all say thank you.
I'd like to invite Colonel Stanci to the podium. I'm sorry. For the public hearing? Okay, got it. All right, fair enough. And this time, I'd like to invite Bronson Williams to the podium. And, uh, this time, I'd like to invite Bronson Williams to the podium.
I want to say good evening, uh, to everyone. And, um, had an opportunity to watch the Committee as a whole meeting today. Uh, so great things that the city is doing as relates to the Committee, uh, as a whole, and working towards, uh, making Rocky Mount a better place. This past week, had an opportunity to go over to Baskerville Elementary School, uh, where there again I saw our Chief of Police and many, uh, people, uh, well, many officers with the department, helping young men tatas. That was one of the most unique experiences, sharing, uh, values, wisdom with them, and creating a, a hopefully, a lifelong mentor. We need more positive programming like than our community, and always excited, uh, to see just how our Police Department is engaging with our public. That is important. Uh, bridging those relationships, uh, that were so often looked at in a negative light because of what, what happens naturally, uh, with our Police Department. But I must say that we are doing a great job here in Rocky Mount under Chief Hassel and the many other folks that's within the agency, uh, for sure. And we thank the City Council for making the necessary investment in, in the agency. Uh, with FUSI systems and et cetera, we're seeing people, uh, being caught who are committing crimes, and so that is good too. So we can say, uh, that Rocky Mount is a place, uh, that has no time for crime, uh, indeed. And the other piece, as, as I always say, is I hope that in the upcoming months, uh, as it was made mentioned in the Committee as a whole meeting, that we'll real, really take a hard look at, uh, what a plan is going forward. Um, I, I know that we say, hey, we, we can look at the history of Rocky Mount and see it moving forward and, and all this good stuff. But, but I want people who are not from the city to be able to go to our website or go here and say, hey, I want to invest in Rocky Mount as well. I actually think that that would help with some of the incentive that you're offering because, uh, if they see what's going on, they may say, I, I need less of an incentive because I see the magic happening in our city. I see the, the full potential of Rocky Mount because I took the time, uh, to put together a comprehensive plan where people can buy into. We need more buy-in in Rocky Mount. I believe we got it, we're on the right trajectory, and I hope you continue to do, uh, what you do. And Merry Christmas to all.
Thank you, sir. Okay, at this point, that brings us to item number nine on our agenda, which is the Consent Agenda. Please recall that we removed item I from the Consent Agenda. I'd like a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as published.
So move.
Motion made by Councilman Joyner, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman TJ Walker. Is there a need for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Consent Agenda passes. That brings us to item nine A, which is, uh, consideration of a lease procurement and maintenance management with Enterprise of, uh, Fleet Management, adopting a resolution approving the administrative policy number Roman numeral three dot twenty-two entitled Lease Vehicle Procurement Policy and adopting a resolution amending position and classification and pay plan as written in the agenda. Uh, is there a motion?
So move.
Motion made by Councilman TJ Walker, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Tom Harris. Uh, is there a need for discussion?
Yes, sir, I have a comment.
Councilman Blackwell.
Thank you for moving it out of the Consent Agenda. I think, uh, two million dollar transaction that, um, changes the way that we, uh, staff our car or purchase or lease cars deserves some time and attention. We have had one presentation, um, several questions that came up about that. And, um, the thing that is most concerning to me, um, I'm trying to understand, other than having a third party manage our business, um, I'm really concerned about the long-term implications of moving a public, uh, function into private sector, looking for, um, how sourcing is going to be improved when you're purchasing off of the state plan anyway. And, um, who is making new cars? Um, the manufacturers are making new cars. Um, is it going to be lucrative for the company? Um, and perhaps, and I, I saw the first pass at the data that was presented, but again, it's just interesting to me, uh, for transparency, for accountability, that, uh, we've had one meeting in the Committee as a whole, and we're changing drastically, uh, move to purchase city vehicles. I'm concerned about it. I'm not saying that it's wrong or illegal, I'm just concerned about it. And I just felt, and I, I can't vote, I mean, I hope it works, and I'm sure we have the votes to pass it. But I think it sets a precedent that is not reflective thoughtful. Um, and I don't feel it's properly vetted, but I hope it works. But I will be voting against it.
Thank you, Councilman Blackwell. Is there further discussion?
Y- yes.
Councilman Knight.
I saw we had some, uh, council members had some concerns in reference to, um, this contract. And I don't think we really got a full, clear understanding of the questions that we had. And, uh, I'm not comfortable in, in voting for it, uh, at this particular time. I know that, um, this company was at one of the, um, conferences that we had, and I did read up on some of the information. But we were also, um, researching to find out if any other municipality, uh, was doing the same thing with this company. And the last meeting that we had, it was, I think they were only doing something with the county and not any, um, municipalities in, in North Carolina. So it is a concern. Um, it, it may seem if we are going to save some money, but I still have some concerns about it.
Thank you. Additional comments? Councilman Joyner.
Could we have the City Manager to share with us how we're going to monitor this and what ways, if it's not working, that we can, uh, do something different?
Mr. Varney.
Let's see, for, for some background, uh, for years and years and years, the city has, um, acquired, um, vehicles off state contract, is how we've done it. And the vehicles we're talking about under, under this proposal are, are, are light-duty vehicles. These would be sedans and pickup trucks and vans, uh, that type of vehicle. Uh, we have three hundred and forty-two, um, light-duty vehicles in the fleet, and, uh, more than half of those are over ten years old. What that indicates is that we have really not been replacing those vehicles, uh, on the schedules that, that we really should be doing it. So, um, so what this idea is, is to, is to enter into an agreement to, to lease vehicles. Um, for the amount of money that we would use to buy, um, some number of vehicles, say, in, in this year's budget, uh, we could, we could lease, um, you know, a, a greater number of those vehicles and so that we can get our fleet caught back up. That's really what this proposal is trying to do, is catch up, uh, the, um, the, the, the vehicles in the fleet to get those more, um, more up-to-date and more safe and, and, and more fuel-efficient, all, all of that. I guess the, uh, the, the control mechanism might, that, um, well, let's see, the agreements call for, uh, a lease agreement and also for, um, for maintenance management. So what we would do would be to farm out, uh, through this arrangement, the, the maintenance, the regular vehicle maintenance for these vehicles. The, um, uh, I, I guess the concern, not, I don't want to say the concern, but the, the control that I would want to be sure that we, um, implement on this is, um, when we replace a vehicle. So when we come up with a list of vehicles, these vehicles, uh, we want to take out of the fleet and, um, and lease these replacement vehicles, whatever they are, some number of replacement vehicles, that we would determine, that, that management really would determine what those vehicles would be. In other words, uh, i- it's easy for maybe people within the, employees within the divisions and, and the departments to say, well, I want to upgrade from a, from a Frontier to a F-one-fifty, or, or I want to upgrade from a Frontier-type pickup truck to a Sequoia or something like that. Uh, there, there needs to be, and, and I think there, there would be control over that, um, by having a City Manager, the Assistant City Managers, the Finance Director, approving every single one of those requests. That, that's the, that's the one thing that I see as a control mechanism for, um, for managing the, the replacement of these vehicles. Uh, as it is proposed, it would save money because we would be disposing of vehicles, um, when they reach their economic, uh, end, end of their economic life, and, uh, and then using the equity from those sales to, um, to invest in the, in the new, in the new lease for new vehicles. Um, it is something very different from what this city has ever done before. Um, it has, it is done by other municipalities, uh, mostly smaller municipalities, but also with, uh, in, in the state of North Carolina, but also with counties, uh, in the state, uh, whose fleet size is, um, is generally equivalent to our fleet size. So it, it has been done, um, in, 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 in other jurisdictions in North Carolina. So I, I think it is a manageable thing to do, and, and what is, again, intended to do is to, um, to bring our fleet, get, to catch up the, the, the fleet from what we should have been doing is replacing those vehicles as they age out.
Thank you, Mr. Varney. Is there a need for further discussion? Yes, Councilman Joyner.
If this don't work, what is our way out?
Terminate the contract is the way out. Uh, we can terminate at any time. Um, the way I'm envisioning it is that it would take about a, a five-year period to, 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 uh, completely replace the light-duty fleet, but it could be that after year one, say, uh, that we do not like this, this is not working, we're not happy, I don't know, whatever reason we have, we don't want to do this anymore, we can, we can, um, can stop the contract. And what would happen then is the vehicles that we leased, that are, we are then leasing, we would need to be, uh, we would, we would acquire those vehicles. So I bet you can stop it at any time.
One que- Councilman Knight.
Um, have we opened this up to other car rental or leasing companies of the Enterprise?
No, we haven't. Uh, the arrangement with Enterprise, I think, has been entered into with other jurisdictions, other cities and counties. And, and what we, what we're doing, I think, is piggybacking on, um, on those, um, on the, on those processes that those jurisdictions have followed in order to get to Enterprise.
And we are currently piggybacking as of now, correct?
I'm, say that again, now.
I mean, aren't we doing the same in the process that we are?
Well, yes, we, uh, well, in terms of replacing vehicles, what we've been doing is buying vehicles off state contract.
Correct.
And so we, we're, to use the term, piggybacking on the state, basically. They do all the bidding for all, all kinds of vehicles, and we just, we just, um, use their vendors and their, their bid process to acquire vehicles. And that goes for both, uh, light-duty and, uh, heavy-duty pieces of equipment.
Thank you, Mr. Varney. Are any further questions for Mr. Varney or other comments?
No, I just, I just want to make just one. We talked more about ten thousand dollar grants than we have a two million dollar program. And I applaud the staff and their creativity, and thank you for your research. Uh, my concern, however, is that, um, it's unvetted, and it shifts to another type of business model that we've not engaged in before. And I would have just liked to have had more conversation and discussion and more engagement from our team about, um, this big shift that we're making in policy development. And I do want to say that, um, I hope this does not bleed over into other departments and philosophies about privatizing public business. I'm also concerned about maintenance schedules. We've got a maintenance team and crew, and employing third-party folks to manage processes with public dollars that we should be able to do ourselves. That's just my opinion. Uh, Mr. Varney's done a phenomenal job, and I think he's playing, we're paying, we're playing catch-up for time passed. And, um, if we do this, I recommend that we limit it, um, or research it and create lots of transparency, as always been called, transparency about the actual performance of the contract versus what was stated on the front end. I'm still voting against it, but I know you got the votes to pass it, but so what, it's okay. I'm all right.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Blackwell. I'm going to call a question now. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
Aye.
Okay, the ayes, uh, it passes. I say that right.
The first ayes.
Yeah, yeah, that's why it's, another way to say that, right. Um, Mr. Rose, is it possible for us to combine, uh, item ten and item eleven, uh, in, in the public hearing?
No, I think they're, they're separate.
Need to be separate.
Yeah.
All right, very well. Uh, that being the case, uh, we will, I will open up the public hearing on item number ten, which is, uh, explanation of the feasibility study relative to the annexation number three twenty-eight ninety-one twenty-one for West Mount Drive. I'd like to have staff come forward and, um, provide that information to us. And at that time, I will, we will acknowledge that receipt of the feasibility study and open it up to the public.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. First item, nine twenty-one, West Mount Drive. It's approximately seven point one-one acres. Uh, the request came in, water is available on this site, uh, sewer is not available currently. According to the annexation agreement, um, environmental services will not be provided, uh, the utility service agreement. There will be a proposed, uh, surplus based on estimated, uh, tax revenue, um, and it is looking like this would be potentially ward for if approved.
Any questions for Mr. Dean? Okay, seeing none, hearing none, what I'll do is I'll ask Mr. Logan if he'd like to come to the podium, and any member of the public who's here to speak on this matter, if you'll just simply line up, uh, that would be helpful.
Uh, good evening, uh, Mayor, uh, City Council persons, uh, Mr. Peter, uh, City Clerk. Um, first let me just open by thanking you for your leadership. I do not take lightly the responsibility that comes with public service, the often thankless job, the emotion and the time and energy that comes along with that is something that, um, we all need to stand and applaud. Uh, my name is Malcolm Logan. I'm a nine-year resident and small business owner within, uh, Nash County and within the City of Rocky Mount. Um, I'm rising in support of agenda item number ten, the proposed annexation number three twenty-eight concerning the property at ninety-one twenty-one West Mount Drive. Over the past few days, you would have received a communication from the petitioner, James Galyard, articulating an appeal for this matter. By way of restatement, this non-contiguous property is currently serviced by City of Rocky Mount Water, Electric, and Natural Gas. The petitioner seeks voluntary annexation to allow for the privately-funded installation of Rocky Mount Sewer. Concurrent to annexation, the partial would be redesignated from R-thirty to O-I-two. Uh, pursuant to the findings and recommendations of the Department of Development Services feasibility study, I respectfully request your approval of the annexation petition. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak on item number ten? Please come forward. If you would, state your name for the record, and your address would be also helpful.
Yes, my name is John Cheatham. I live at three five-five-one Wood Doug Lane, and that adjoins the property in question.
So thank you.
I've been there about eighteen years. I believe I represent the West Mount community when I say that I am opposed to the satellite annexation of ninety-one twenty-one, ninety-fourty-one, and ninety-fifty-three West Mount Drive. West Mount has obvious ties to Rocky Mount in many ways. Many of us work, shop, and have family and/or friends that are city neighbors. We want to see Rocky Mount prosper. It's in our best interest. We understand an individual loan owner's, landowner's right to request voluntary annexation, and we respect that, into the city. And we also understand that this does not create a future avenue for involuntary annexation of surrounding property. We are deeply concerned as a community, however, that the change in character that will result, the petition for annexation is just the beginning for this property. The applicant has clearly stated intentions of changing the character of the property to commercial or business use, which is inconsistent with the current surrounding residential and agricultural uses. This will require rezoning after annexation. Such rezoning is inconsistent with the previous or current Nash County Comprehensive Land Use Plan. West Mount has retained its rural residential character despite having four lanes from Bethlehem Road to Halifax Road for approximately the last forty years. Business and commercial areas remain centered at crossroads rather than along the residential stretches of West Mount Drive. When word tabernacle purchased the property, the committee understood that they would ultimately use the property for a church. They have since moved into the Home Depot facility. How they have indicate, now they have indicated possible plans for restaurants, private campgrounds, and RV park, outdoor amphitheater, and event and conference venues. These uses will require rezoning to classifications, excuse me... me, that would include a host of other uses that are drastically different in nature than the current rural residential character. They would also create different and more intensive traffic flow than residential or conventional church use. We request that each of these issues be thoughtfully considered before approving the pending satellite annexation request of 9121, 9041, and 9053 Westmount Drive. Thank you for your time. I hope you all have a very Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Merry Christmas. Anybody else from the public wishing to speak? Please come forward.
This is Mayor, City Council. My name is Keith Langley. I live at 3409 Cushing Drive, directly across from the property that we were discussing. I oppose the annexation requested of 9121, 9041, and 9053 Westmount Drive. As you review feasibility studies related to the satellite annexation under General Statute 160A-31, I ask that you consider the following. Number one, the property is located almost a mile from the current contiguous city limits. Number two, the property is only a mile away from Westmount Fire Department or Fire and Rescue Services, but three miles from the closest city fire station on Winston Avenue. Three, first responders are able to provide a faster response time to this area from the local fire department rather than the city, better serving the property health and safety. If converted to business zoning after annexation, street maintenance services will be impacted. Number five, if environmental services are needed in the future, they would likely experience greater costs and revenue benefits for traveling outside the contiguous city limits to service a small number of business and residential points. Number six, most of the property is tax-exempt, and as such, is not contributing to ongoing services that would be provided to the city, that would be provided to service the area. Number seven, the applicant has stated publicly the need for sewer service. The closest sewer service is approximately one mile away. Even if applicant is able to obtain grants for their needs, it is likely that the city would examine and pursue an oversized sewer plan at the city's expense to accommodate proposed future growth. This would likely result in expense to the city in excess of 1.2 million. Number eight, sewer service will be required significantly, significant capital improvements and acquisitions of easements from the community owners that would likely be hostile to such acquisition and the great cost to the city. Nine, most of the land between current city limits and the proposed site have multi-generational ownership, with younger generational owners continuing to live on family property. This reduces the likelihood of future development and annexation that would otherwise provide long-term benefit from capital, from city capital.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other member from the public wishing to speak? Please come forward.
Good afternoon. My name is Gwendolyn Rigsby. I live at 1623 Westmount Drive, between the current city limits and the proposed annexation property. I am a lifelong resident of the Westmount community. I also oppose the annexation request of 9121, 9041, and 9053 Westmount Drive. In your consideration, I ask that you review the sufficiency of notice hearing. It is my understanding that property owners within 250 feet of the subject property were supposed to be notified. I do not have this list, but in reviewing the feasibility study, I see a list of adjoining owners. I believe this would include Grace Drupel at 9243 Westmount Drive, Cody and Ashley Cobb Melvin at 9257 Westmount Drive, as well as those owners on the other side of the Tar River, including Shirley Curtis at 3506 Shenandoah Drive, and Bobby Joyner at 12010 East NC97. Additionally, when looking at annexation of additional property into any town or city, there are many things that need to be looked at and considered. One of the most important ones should be return on investment. This test is done with every business decision. Elected officials have a very clear charge to look after the purse strings of the public funds as well. This proposed annexation is truly a case that will lead to one or two things: higher taxes on the remaining populace of the city, or possible reduced services to the balance of the city. Look at this as if you were buying a house. You would always be sure there's sufficient revenue stream to make the mortgage payment. That logic applies when considering whether to approve a requested annexation. Is there sufficient revenue stream to pay the cost to provide the services that match what the other parts of the city have available? The case here is clearly no. Annexation is very similar to rezoning. The action taken applies to the land, not the person making the request. Even if the applicant knows the property does not currently have key services like sewer or solid waste pickup, does not make those service obligations go away. The cost of all services provided to taxpayers must be factored in determining cost. Within the planned activities stated by the applicant, there will certainly be added costs for police protection and emergency services, as well as many others. I thank you for your consideration in opposing this annexation request.
Thank you. Anybody else here from the public wishing to speak?
Gentlemen and council, thank you for the opportunity to speak before you tonight. My name is Jack Tyson. I live at 2306 Bunny Drive in Elm City, on a property at 9214 Westmount Drive that is adjacent to my mother's property at 9186. Both of these properties are directly in front, across from the properties that are asking to be annexed. I oppose the annexation requested for 9121, 9041, and 9053 Westmount Drive. As the city evaluates the satellite annex petition, the community asks that you evaluate the General Statute 168-582A. When a city makes a satellite annexation in area covered by Rural Fire Protection District, the city must annually pay its appropriate cost and share of the payment due of any debt that is related to facilities or equipment of the Rural Fire Department. The Westmount Fire Department currently has an outstanding debt, and the feasibility study does not appear to address this. The city needs to evaluate in its share of the debt service based on the size of the requested annexation. Additionally, given the acreage involved, the city needs to evaluate General Statute 168-58 dot one, section five, provided that area within proposed satellite corporate limits, when added to the area within all other satellite corporate limits, may not exceed 10% of the area within the primary corporate limits of the annexing city. Given that a significant portion of the property is taxed at them, the city should consider this satellite annexation reduces the pool of future potential annexations. This analysis could be critical to the future of the city if we're looking to satellite annex an area for potential industrial or other high-tax-based or utility revenues that could be generated from other facilities. From a cost-benefit analysis, this seems to be a poor use of limited satellite annexation potential, considering the statutory 10% limit. Save a larger satellite annexation like this for a true revenue producer for the city. I believe that as the city thoughtfully evaluates this petition, the potential for a negative return on investment it will generate, and the likely limitation of future satellite expansion for more viable projects, that you hopefully agree this annexation is not a step forward for the city of Rocky Mount. I thank you for your time, and wish you Merry Christmas in the upcoming year. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak on this matter? Good evening.
I'm DeLeon Parker, and I live at 4644 South Halifax Road. I also own land off of 1627 Westmount Drive, which is currently between the current city limits and the proposed site, along with my mother, two sisters, and nephews. I've lived in the Westmount community my entire life. I practice real estate law at 120 North Franklin Street, just over two blocks from here, and I'm a board-certified specialist in residential and commercial real estate. I also oppose the annexation request of 9121, 9041, and 9053 Westmount Drive. As a community, we understand the city's desire to grow and an individual owner's option to petition for annexation. As each speaker before me has addressed, there are a variety of concerns for both community residents and the city that should be given careful thought and consideration before moving forward. From the city perspective, this includes issues like negative return on investment, given the tax exempt status of a majority of the property, the negative impacts to future satellite annexation, given the 10% statutory limitation that appears unaddressed in the feasibility study, and analysis of the Westmount Fire Department debt and the city's potential statutory obligation layer. Additionally, the feasibility study assumptions based on present use will not be accurate if the applicant's plans for business development come about and it changes to O and I. From a community standpoint, I believe the biggest opposition comes from the applicant's desire to change the property character from residential and church use to commercial. In recent statements on WHIG, the intent is clearly commercial, which will require future rezoning to the O and I, which the community will strongly oppose on multiple fronts. The feasibility study does not address potentially significant costs the city might incur in bringing sewer to the property, or the significant community outcry that would result from an attempt to re-characterize the property. To date, we have a petition with over 127 signatures of community residents opposed to such change in the way that the applicant has chosen to bring about that change. To respect the council's time, we've only had a few members of the community speak, but at this time, if it's okay, I would like to ask everyone from the Westmount community that is opposed to the annexation to please quietly stand. We respectfully ask that you either table or deny this present request. I've got copies of the petition, if I can give those to clerk. And also, I'd like to ask, because of the similarity between this petition and the next petition, rather than us speaking again, if I can just provide our written comments to go on the record for the second petition.
I personally would applaud that.
Thank you.
And just for the record, we're not scheduled to vote on this tonight, but to receive public comment. If you would hand it to our assistant manager, Mr. Daniel, that would be very helpful.
Thank you. Y'all have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Merry Christmas. Anybody else from the public here to speak? Okay, seeing none, I'll close this public hearing and acknowledge the receipt of the feasibility study and the public hearing. Thank you, everyone who's spoken, and we appreciate your comments. This time, it brings us to item number 11 on our agenda, which is another public hearing. And I'll ask staff, please come down and give us the feasibility study as it relates to annexation number 329-9041 and 9053 Westmount Drive. And please go over that for us, if you will. Then I'll open it up to public comment.
Mayor and member council, this property, 90419053 Westmount, immediately to the west, much larger tract, 59.41, almost 60 acres. Feasibility study projects estimated revenue from the stormwater utility fee based on the proposed uses and the non-taxable ownership of that property.
Any questions for Mr. Dean? All right, seeing none, hearing none, I'll open the floor to any member of the public who's here to speak. I believe most of the comments in the previous public hearing also pertain to this, but in the event that somebody has something else to say, please come forward.
Yes, Malcolm Logan, rising again now in support of agenda item number 11, proposed annexation number 329 concerning the properties at 9041 and 9053 Westmount Drive. In addition to my prior comments, I'm rising on this particular occasion on behalf of petitioner Word Tabernacle Church and its authorized representative, James Galyard. I think it is worth noting that the draft annexation agreement does provide for solid waste collection and sewer to remain private, so there is no expectation, as articulated in the feasibility study, that that would impose a financial hardship on the city. I also encourage everyone to consider these opportunities from a bigger-picture perspective than solely looking at it from a tax revenue and potential utility revenue standpoint. The proposed activity on this site would result in economic investment. Word Tabernacle Church has a history of driving successful economic development in this community, which even without generating tax revenue has served as a critical hub for social services, for infrastructure, and for other critical needs to the community. Any sort of investment in the development of property on these parcels would create jobs. It would drive tourists and other participants of the community to the market to spend money inside local businesses that would also boost the tax base of the city. So even if they're not directly traceable to the properties itself, there would still be economic benefit resulting from its presence there. I also would like to enter into the record the fact that the parcels are on a five-lane major collector between Rocky Mount and the I-95 interchange. The parcels are on a five-lane curb and gutter section road, i.e. it is not a subdivision road. There's a gas station, convenience store, and a restaurant less than one mile to the west. There's a logging business less than one-third of a mile to the east. There's a communication slash cable provider about one mile to the east. For these reasons and those articulated in the feasibility study, I respectfully request your approval of the proposed annexation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public here to speak? Just couldn't stand it, could you?
Couldn't stand it. Very quickly, just as a point of addressing a couple comments that were just made. The cable TV company, Southern Link, that's there, has been there for over 40 years. It is in the current city limits. The logging business that was referenced under, I believe if you look at industrial codes, it's termed as agricultural. It has been there as long as I can remember, predates me, and is a non-conformant use with the county. In county planning, businesses are basically restricted to intersections, which is at a mile either direction, not in the middle of a road. So this would not be something that would be permitted anywhere in the current county zoning regulations. So again, that gets back to the change in character of the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public here to speak? Hearing none, seeing none, I close the public hearing, which brings us to item 12 on our agenda, which is consideration of the bid for the demolition of 10 houses listed below awarded to J and L Land Solutions in the amount of $66,218. They are 417 Gloucester Road, 427 Arlington Street, 319 Marigold Street. We have notations on the side. I please ask you to refer to those. 721 Gay Street, 413 and 415 North Pine Street, 835 West Thomas Street, 419 Northeast Main Street, 516 Coleman Street, and 327 South Discovery Street. Looking for a motion to award the bid as recommended.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Dautridge, and was that, sorry, Jabaris Walker, the second.
Could I update on it?
Mr. Varney, please.
Before you vote. I had met with the owner of 319 Marigold Street last week and his attorney. He had asked, I think at the last council meeting, that we pull that address off the demolition list. And so what we talked about was agreeing to take that off the demolition list on the condition that he provide a cash bond and a schedule for the renovation of the property, rehabilitation of the property. I've not seen the cash bond or the schedule. He did apply for a building permit for the renovation of the property, so I don't have that. So if you were to award the bid with 319 Marigold included in it, the total amount of the bid would be $81,598. The $66,218 amount is with 319 Marigold being removed from the list.
So then the motion on the floor is the $66,218 is exclusive of 319 Marigold pending posting of a bond. So do we need to amend the motion? Ms. Rose?
Yes, you need to.
So, Mr. Dautridge, would you be willing to amend the motion to reflect the $81,591 in the event that bond is not posted for 319 Marigold Street?
Yes, sir, just as you mentioned.
Mr. Jabaris Walker, would you be willing to continue a second on that? Okay, is there a need for further discussion? Yes, sir, Councilman Harris, and then I will.
And I have a question, too.
Yes, okay.
Mr. Mayor, my question to interim city manager is, what kind of timeframe are we putting with Mr. Burnett on getting that cash bond and putting with Mr. Burnett on getting that cash bond and schedule back to the city?
What we agreed to was that we would have it before this meeting, the schedule and the bond.
Do you have it?
I don't have it. Let's see, does somebody have it? I don't have it, and so I don't know that I've got a whole lot of choice but to recommend award of the bid with three nineteen Marigold included in it. We did, the other negotiation we had in there was on, is it four twenty-seven Arlington Street, is another property that Mr. Burnett owns. He asked for sixty days before that demolition takes place in order that he could remove items of value, things like windows and doors and fireplace surrounds and things like that from the house. And so we've arranged with the demolition contractor to proceed with the demolition of all the homes that are on the list and accomplish that one on Arlington Street not earlier than January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, to accommodate that request.
Thank you. I recognize Councilman Knight. Was it? Did she want to speak? I'll recognize your Councilman Joyner, then Mr. Knight, I'll add you to the bottom of the list.
The manager, or you, is there a way you can meet back with Mr. Burnett so we can get, if there is anything we can do?
Say that again now.
I know we had talked about Mr. Burnett. Can you plan to meet with him to get any other clarity on that?
Asking to meet with him again? I could meet with him again if he's willing to be, I'd be happy to meet with him.
Councilman Blackwell.
I just would like deadlines. I would like deadlines that are clear. Want to support anyone who is helping us to revitalize our communities, but we need deadlines. The houses have sat vacant for a long time and dilapidated, and we saw some pictures, I think, the last meeting, with some progress, but we need deadlines, from my perspective.
Thank you. Councilman Knight?
My question, Mr. Varney, Mr. Burnett had given a list of repairs that was done to the property, three nineteen Marigold. Has that been vetted and if the work has been done that was stated during the public meeting?
Right, when we met with him, we saw pictures that he presented that indicated that the front of the house had been painted and that he had done some electrical work inside the house. There was an electrical, a new electrical panel box and some, what do you call, receptacles that apparently were connected to that. There was no electrical permit for those improvements, but the pictures did show those, that work had been done. But the pictures also showed pretty extensive amount of work that needs to be done to get that house back in, well, back in condition, back in reusable condition.
Did I go visit, do a visual visit of the property after we had the comment from Mr. Burnett, seeing if inspection would have gone out to verify whether he did or did not?
Right, we, and right, one of the code enforcement inspectors did go and visit the property and took photographs of what was in the house, and those photographs match what Mr. Burnett had showed us. Just painting on the front side of the house and the electrical.
Okay, I'm in agreement.
Okay, any additional comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Brings us to item thirteen on our agenda, which is consideration of the recommendation for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, CDBG CV Public Service Awards totaling sixty-nine thousand sixty-four dollars, the Boys and Girls Club, Rocky Mount Edgecombe Community Development Corporation, United Community Ministries, Home for the Children at Bassett Center, and then the Community Shelter. Requested action is that we approve the recommending funding request and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the required documentation on behalf of the city. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Joyner, or second? Second by Councilman T.J. Walker. Any need for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, like sign. Item carries. Item fourteen is consideration of the twenty twenty-one Annual Action Plan Home American Rescue Plan substantial amendment. Public hearing was held on November twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-two. Requested action is that we approve the planned amendment and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute required documentation on behalf of the city. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Joyner, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Tom Harris. Is there a need for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, like sign. Brings us to item fifteen, which is the election of a mayor pro temp. It's a one-year term that expires December of twenty twenty-three. I'll open the floor for nomination.
I'll make the motion to nominate T.J. Walker for mayor pro temp.
T.J. Walker. Are there any other nominations?
I was going to make a nomination of Ruben Blackwell.
Okay. Ruben Blackwell?
And I'm going to withdraw my name. Thank you.
Councilman Blackwell withdraws, okay.
Thank you for the conference.
I'm sorry.
Said, thank you for the conference.
Absolutely. Hearing no other nominations, all in favor of T.J. Walker, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Congratulations. Councilman Walker.
Can I?
Yes, Councilman Joyner.
Thank you, T.J. Walker. If we could, I know that the normal term has been one year, and I know that we try to make sure that we give other opportunities to council to serve in that position, and I know that the mayor pro temp hosts the council of the whole. Could we look at, since this is the first two-year term, can we look at having these next terms be two-year terms and job descriptions clearly of the mayor pro temp and that we have two-year terms and then rotate?
I would request that we have that discussion, maybe not tonight, but perhaps we can add it to the next committee of the whole. Mayor pro temp, would that be something we could do? And then have that discussion and perhaps go from there. Brings us to item sixteen on the agenda, which is the appointment of Keith C. Rogers as our city manager. I need a motion. Oh, yes, Councilman?
Before we do that, I just wanted to thank the councilman, thank Councilman Jabaris Walker for the nomination, and the term is still a one-year term. I think what happened was there was a one-year term that expired, and there was a reelection for another one-year term, but I don't have any issue with putting it on the committee of the whole agenda for two-year term.
I have, thank you, Councilman. I have a motion from Councilman Knight to appoint Keith Rogers as city manager. Is there a second? Was that you? Was it you?
I'm standing.
Oh, I thought I heard you, I'm sorry. Okay. All right, you got the second, is Councilman Joyner. Is there a need for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. We now have a new city manager, and I think that Mr. Varney probably is probably the happiest man tonight of anybody here in the room. Or his wife is.
Yeah, she is.
Brings us to item sixteen, which are, are there any appointments to be brought before?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, Councilman Blackwell.
That's sort of a big deal.
It's a huge deal, yeah, it is.
And don't you think that, you know?
Oh, we'll read this, I thought, okay, absolutely. I'd be happy to do that. Well, you know what? Okay, I'll be happy to do that. City council appoints Keith C. Rogers, junior city manager. Mr. Rogers is currently the town manager of Dumfries, Virginia, has been responsible for the leadership and management of daily operations of the town's government since twenty nineteen. Dumfries has thirty-plus employees who serve the town's nearly six thousand residents. Among his many accomplishments in Dumfries, Rogers successfully led the town council and staff through municipal bond refunding process, resulting in the savings of more than six hundred and forty thousand dollars. He previously spent a decade working for the city of Richmond, Virginia, holding various executive roles that included chief of staff and chief administrative officer. And then we'll just later by reading the various quotes, but we have somebody that I think we're very excited about, somebody I think will do great and wondrous things for the city of Rocky Mount, and I think that seeing unanimous vote here from council is an expression, I believe, of everybody's position and desire for his success. So with that said, I will open it up now for appointments to the city council, are there any appointments to be brought before the council? Can we just go ahead with the appointments?
No, I just want to stand and give Mr. Varney.
Oh, well, we weren't done with him yet. Now, Peter, I just need you to know, despite that standing ovation, you can't leave until March, so you're not done yet.
This is the Hotel California.
It's proven to be that for you, for sure. Okay, are there any appointments to be brought before council tonight?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, Councilman Daughtry.
I'm not sure if it was in our packet or was going to be passed out, but we, if it's not, hopefully we can appoint William Johnson to the Historic Preservation Commission. I have a copy of his personal history form, and there's one availability on that floor.
Okay. Any other names to be brought before? Yes, sir, Councilman Harris.
Ward six has, Ward six has an opening for tree advisory committee. I have a completed personal history form from Austin Bradley Warren, and would like for him to serve in that capacity. Thank you for your consideration.
Any other names to be brought? Okay, William Johnson for the Historic Preservation and the Austin Warren for the tree advisory. Do we have a motion in support of these two individuals?
So moved.
Councilman Joyner has made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, second from Councilman T.J. Walker. Need for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Having no other business to appear before the council tonight, I now adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
Much sooner than I thought.